Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
And Chair Hardy?
Yes.
I would also like to note Chair Hardy, we had a meeting back in August 18th, which we had a cancel for Farmstead because of the power outage. And I just want to note that that will be noted in tonight's minutes and it will also be noted on the agenda that was posted online.
Thank you very much. So then we come to our main business of the evening. Item 5.1, a request by our town, St. Helena, for approval of a lot merger use permit and design review in order to construct four new affordable units in a multifamily housing development on the property located at 963 Pope Street in the medium density residential zoning district. Planner Heacock, I believe this is yours to present, am I right?
Yes, thank you Chair Hardy.
Thank you.
So the proposed project site consists of two parcels totaling 12,750 square feet. The smaller of the two parcels is only 3,750 square feet. It is currently developed with landscaping and a bocce ball court. Larger of the two parcels is 9,000 square feet and is currently developed with a 972 square foot, single story, two bedroom, one bathroom, single family home. As a little background, on August 27, 2019, the city council authorized entering into a loan agreement with our town St. Helena an amount not to exceed $450,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Measure E funds for our town St. Helena to acquire both parcels located at 963 Pope Street in order to facilitate additional affordable housing in the city. As part of this loan agreement, the applicant was required to enter into an affordable housing agreement with the city, limiting future rents on any housing project resulting from the loan to no more than 120% of area median income. Staff is recommending that a condition of approval be added to the approving resolution tonight, requiring that the existing affordability agreement be amended to reflect requirements of state density bonus law to received concessions. In order for the project to be approved with the four concessions, the agreement must be amended, allowing no more than one unit at modern income and the rest at very low or low income. The suggested condition of approval would read, "Prior to issuance of the building permit, the existing affordability agreement shall be amended and recorded to reflect that no more than one unit be rented at moderate income level. All other units must be rented at low or very low income levels." Additional background, that on November 10, 2020, the city council authorized the payment of in-lu fees to achieve water neutrality and the use of affordable housing trust funds in an amount not to exceed $109,002 to waive planning application fees, to waive in-lu fees to achieve water neutrality, and to waive building permit and development impact fees in order to accommodate development of the proposed project at this location. As Chair Hardy mentioned, the project consists of a lot merger use permit and design review in order to accommodate the construction of four new affordable housing units in addition to the existing unit, so five total affordable units on the site. The four new units will consist of two bedroom, one bathroom units at 924 square feet each, situated in two 1,848 square foot buildings. These four units are designed to minimize costs by designing one building with two units that will be duplicated as a mirror image for the second two units. The new buildings would be finished with horizontal fiber cement lap siding, vertical fiber cement siding with battens, composition shingle roofing, and will be approximately 27 feet in height. The affordable rental housing project is eligible for up to four concessions under state density bonus law if rented at the income levels previously mentioned. A couple of points of clarification. While state density bonus law applies to the project, it is a 100% affordable housing project, no actual density bonus is being requested. The project is at the maximum density allowed in the medium density residential district, which is five units. Also, a correction to the written staff report. The project is seeking approval of four concessions opposed to a combination of concessions and development standard waivers. The four concessions requested are: One, a reduction in the rear yard setback from 30 feet to seven and a half feet. Reduction in the side yard setback from 15 feet to five feet. An increase in the maximum floor area ratio to allow for an additional 1,072 square feet. And a reduction in the number and type of required on-street or onsite parking spaces from 10 with five covered to seven uncovered. Outside of the concessions just discussed, the project complies with all other development standards in the medium density district, including density, lot coverage, height, width, and front yard setback. Staff would like to note that the word visitor was on the provided site plan set on both the onsite ADA parking space and the on-street public parking space. It should be noted that staff is in receipt over a revised site plan with the word visitor that is omitted. As discussed in the staff report, staff has no issues with the proposed lot merger and believe it makes sense having the entirety of the project on one site. And this report serves as the planning director's approval of the lot merger application. Staff believes that the project meets and/or complies with the required findings to approve a use permit. And as the proposed project would provide needed new affordable housing units within the city, and was designed to be compatible with the site and the surrounding neighborhood, staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the required design review criteria. For these reasons, staff recommends that the planning commission, one, determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA; two, accept the planning director's approval of a lot merger; three, grant concessions under existing state law for reduced side and rear setbacks, an increase in allowed floor area ratio, and reduced and uncovered parking; and accept the required findings and approve a resolution as amended with the additional condition of approval, granting use permit and design review approval of the proposed project on the property located at 963 Pope Street. I'll now turn it over to City Attorney Ethan Walsh in case there's anything he would like to add about issues before you tonight.
Thank you Chair Hardy, members of the commission. I actually think Aaron covered it really well. I'm here because, primarily because the density bonus issues are fairly complex and the manner in which that statute is implemented has kind of evolved over time and the state law has deviated from what we currently have in our ordinance, but we are required to comply with that state law. And so, to the degree anyone has any questions on how we are implementing this, I'm happy to respond to those, but I think Aaron covered it pretty well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And since we're right at that moment, does anyone on the commission have a legal question for Mr. Walsh about the state law that's been applied in connection with the concessions on this project? Great. Again, thank you, Mr. Walsh. So, does that complete the staff report then?
Yes, Chair Hardy, that completes my report.
Very good. So are there any other questions from the commission for staff on the project? I see none, so then I would like to... Oh, did I miss something, Commissioner Vice Chair?
Yeah, I just sort of waved my hand around. Most of my concerns have been cleared up rather, rather well. I still do have a question on the single ADA parking space. There are, I believe, two units in the complex that are ADA compliant, but yet we only have one ADA compliant parking space. Is there anything we can do to kind of even that number up somehow? Can we, can we have the applicant make that single ADA space a shared one? Is that possible? I've seen that done in some places.
I, I, I'm not an ADA expert. I don't believe so because I need, I believe you need to be able to exit from the passenger side. So I don't think the, the space on the other side of the unloading zone would work.
Okay.
But we, but we can see about trying to find room to create another ADA speed space onsite during the building permit process if that is something you would like us to do.
Just a little reluctant to acknowledge there's two ADA eligible apartments, but only one ADA eligible parking space.
Well, I'm wondering if... Well, it seems to me there are consequences then to changing one space to, an additional space to ADA in that a resident without a card may be left without an onsite space.
I do recognize that, but it's a difficult choice either way you go, I think. Either possibly you're left somebody without a space or you're left somebody who is ADA eligible in a location they can't exit the car if they park.
Understood. Well, I think perhaps this is something we can bring up with the applicant or the applicant's representatives then, because it, it is definitely, as I see it, a site design question first and foremost. Are there any other questions of staff from the commission? Okay, this time, oh. Commissioner Anderson?
Thanks. I, I might have missed this, but 10% is for lower income, 5% for very low income, and 10% for moderate income. But how do five units divide like that?
Yeah, it doesn't. So essentially, they're, they'll, they'll be allowed one moderate and, and the other four will be required to be lower, very low.
Okay. And do we know what income levels that is right now? Like what?
I, I, I don't know what the area median income is. I'm sure our town St. Helena will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I think the coast is clear this time. So I'm going to open the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicant's representatives to present the project, please. Oh, and, and I... Forgive me, Planner Heacock, but I did want to suggest that the fewer of us who rush through our presentations, I'm pretty sure the less likely we are to bring the interpreter to exhaustion. And I, I don't want to speak for out of turn, but I'm pretty sure that just a little bit more time may, may be a good thing for the translator. So, again.
For clarification, are you telling me to slow down?
Slow down, Aaron, please.
Correct. Slow down and use short phrases if possible. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, I see the thumbs up. I wasn't speaking out of turn, apparently. Is the applicant ready to present?
Hi, hi, yeah, hello, I'm Karina O'Brien. I'll be presenting on behalf of the applicant. We had a PowerPoint prepared, is that available to run?
I see Ms. Gamaro is nodding her head.
Yes, she'll be getting it up in just a moment.
Okay. Okay, great. So, good evening commissioners, thank you for considering our proposal for affordable housing this evening. My name is Karina O'Brien. I actually grew up in St. Helena a couple of years ago. And I'm a senior project manager with Napa Valley Community Housing and we were hired by our town St. Helena to project manage 963 Pope Street. Next slide, please.
You could slow down just a little bit, please.
Uh-oh, okay, I'll try. Um, our infill site is located about two blocks east of downtown St. Helena and is about one-third of an acre in size. There is one existing two-bedroom house onsite, surrounded by beautiful, mature landscaping. You will see later in the slides that we were careful to preserve as much of the existing landscaping as possible. Our plan is to add four additional two-bedroom units to the site to create a total of five two-bedroom rental units. The entire property will be 100% affordable and will be able to provide five RENA credits to the city of St. Helena. Next slide, please. Our town St. Helena purchased the property in September 2019, utilizing a no-interest loan from the St. Helena Affordable Housing Trust Fund as well as an acquisition loan from the Rural Community Assistance Corporation. We're projecting to finance the development through a combination of local and state funding sources, including conventional loan funds from the city of St. Helena Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the state housing and community developments home program, and AHP. Next slide, please. As we all know, the need for affordable housing in this community is critical. There have only been 25 income-qualified rental units built in the last 20 years in St. Helena. The city actually has 12 fewer affordable rental units today than it had in 2010 due to a recent hotel development. And 35% of local residents cannot afford to rent a market-rate two-bedroom apartment. That is why we are so excited today to present this high-quality, safe, energy and water-efficient, affordable development to blend into and enhance this wonderful neighborhood. Now I'd like to introduce our architect, Randy Figurito with Tierney Figurito Architects, to go into more detail about the project design. Randy?
Okay, now that I've unmuted myself. Good evening, I'm Randy Figurito of Tierney Figurito Architects. The project you see in front of them is one where we really tried to preserve the character of the site and the appearance on the street and let it fit in both architecturally and spatially with the, the existing neighborhood. As Aaron mentioned, we're adding four units to the property in two, two-story buildings consisting of two-bedroom, one-bath units. The ground floor units are adaptable, as is required by the building code for accessibility. The site design, maybe we can hop, bring the PowerPoint up to the site plan. And there you see it with Pope Street on the, the left. So, on the site plan, we had the existing house. We had the, the mature trees where there was currently the bocce ball court. And so we did is we placed the new buildings at the rear of the site, took the existing trees, used them to create a picnic barbecue area with a pedestrian connection to the, to the rear of the site. And before I forget, I should, should mention that Laurie Cagwin, the landscape architect, and Joel Dickerson, the civil engineer on the project, are also here on the call and able to, to speak to any specific questions you could have to the site engineering, grading, drainage, and/or landscaping. So then we preserved a great deal of the landscaping, which is very nice right now in, in front of the existing home. Did essentially a driveway without a garage at that lower left corner of the site to create two parking spaces and place the rest of the parking spaces on the site. Kind of at the tail end of my presentation, I can talk a little bit about the, the accessible parking space there on the site, because I know that question came up earlier in the meeting. So the site design, tried to maintain and preserve what landscaping was there, used the existing trees, not really eliminate any of the great features that the property already has. The rear of the site has an area with the bicycle parking and trash and raised planter beds that's all set off in the, in the corner there and screened from the, the street. The architecture itself, if we can go to the next slide, you can see the, essentially the four units are pretty much identical. The ground floor ones are a little different because, again, they're the adaptable units, accessible units that have the oversized doors and oversized restrooms. And we've tried to create kind of a, an open plan since the units are about 924 square feet each. You can see in the bathroom designs how we provided an additional sink, just to accommodate the, the number of people that will be in, in these units. Let's see, we can move forward to the elevations. And there you are. I sort of envisioned, architecturally, I envisioned the buildings themselves as essentially two cottages of a scale similar to, to the existing home, except obviously two-story. And the two cottages are connected by a balcony bridge, which is what the, the stairway brings you up to on that. The siding, as Aaron mentioned, is a mix of horizontal lap siding and board and batten with wide trends and kind of traditional gable roofs with slatted roof vents at the gables. The colors we've kept very muted, it's white and then the very light blue-gray, just trying to let the project kind of recede into the background and reduce the, the visual scale of it. We've got double-hung traditional windows. We've reduced the size of the windows as much as possible on the south and west elevations. You can sort of see on this, this slide, on the south elevation there at the bottom on the second floor, there's only really one, one set of larger windows. All the other windows were kept small on those two sides of the property. Those are the sides of the property that are closest to the property lines so we could provide the greatest amount of privacy to the existing neighbors. And again, like I, I said before, our emphasis was, was fitting in with the scale and the architectural character of the, of the neighborhood. If, before we do the landscaping, if we could hop back to just the architectural site plan briefly? So in, in terms of the question about the accessible parking space at the rear of the site, what happens on these projects is the code requires a certain amount of parking for the adaptable units. And that parking is not set up in the code as a one-to-one ratio. It's simply a, a percentage of the parking. So what happened, for instance, if you had a 100-unit project that was two-story buildings, all the ground floor units would have to be adaptable for people with mobility disabilities. The parking for that project, the code would require that, I believe, 5%, if memory serves, of the 50 units would have an accessible parking space. You would have 50 units for people with disabilities and you would have three actual striped and marked accessible spaces. So it's, it's, it's not intended to be a, a one-to-one ratio. So obviously, on a project like this, if, if both the ground floor units were occupied, say, by tenants, you know, in a wheelchair, for example, then you would simply try to do the, the best you could as an accommodation with, with the parking. It'd really be pretty difficult to add more designated striped accessible parking to this project because it's already, already pretty tight getting the five units on the site.
I've been here. This is Joel.
Sure.
Just a quick interlude. So, so what I can tell you to answer Aaron's question, once we have that first accessible space, the van accessible space with the aisle on the right, we can do, and our next accessible space could be on the left of the aisle where it's marked Unit 3 here. So if, if it were the case that both accessible units were occupied by people who needed it to be such, simply adding the sign would be adequate to make that other space accessible. The other thing I might say is that we could assign, you know, assign these two spaces here that are the furthest to the right to the two lower units so that they are always given to those units whether or not the person needs them to be accessible or not.
Yeah, and, and the intent was on the one that's marked Unit 3, if that would be the accessible space for that unit. I, I think where the only hitch comes up is that in the code, technically, you would have the designated space for a unit if a person were in that unit that needed an accessible space, which is the one labeled Unit 3. But the code also requires there to be an accessible visitor space. And so the space that actually has the, the wheelchair symbol on it, that would essentially be the, the code's designated visitor accessible parking space. So that's, that's kind of why it's laid out that way. The Unit 3 space doesn't need the wheelchair symbol on it, but it would be assigned to the tenant in the ground floor that did specifically require an accessible space. So anyway, if we can roll the slides down a few and get to the landscape plan, we can probably let Laurie speak to... Or actually, I think Joel's is actually, no, I guess Laurie's is there. So I'll let Laurie make her presentation on the landscape now.
Good evening. I was involved in the original landscape at the front of the cottage for the prior owner. So I'm familiar with how that was developed and why it was developed as a cottage type of garden with perennials and grasses and roses, medium and low water use plant material. For the modifications to the existing landscape, which would be on either side of that first existing building, the plant material that I chose there was the low-water use plant material that was in the original palette as opposed to medium water use. And that is located around the parquet, which has the two picnic tables and the barbecue, and also in the planter adjacent to this existing building. And then as we extend to the back of the property, plant material that was selected was also low-water use, mainly hedge, hedge material along the property line fence and some vines where it was narrow. At the front of the units, we would have grasses and perennials. And this planting palette would complement what is existing on the site, which was our first slide that we saw. I've added some galvanized stock tanks for vegetable planting, one for each of, of these units. And they're located at the back and then on the side of the existing structure. The irrigation, the proposed irrigation would implement inline or pressure compensating drip irrigation with a smart controller linked to daily abbot transpiration rates. Proposed water use of this drawing, of this planting existing and proposed is estimated to be 39,973 gallons per year, which is 25% less than the allowed water use called Mawa, which would be 52,558 gallons a year. So we're way below what's required to be in compliance with the St. Helena MLLO ordinance for water-efficient landscape guidelines and Mawa allowances. So that's about it, unless we have questions in the future.
There's two more slides, please. Thanks, Laurie. If we could go to the next slide. Um, so our- Um, so Our Town Santa Elena held a stakeholder charrette last spring, which provided valuable feedback on the design. And, and more recently, Our Town mailed letters to the surrounding neighborhood, including both homeowners and tenants. Feedback was minimal but positive and supportive of the project. Next slide, please. And here's our brief timeline for the development. Following entitlements, we will prepare construction drawings and secure building permits. We'll simultaneously assemble the financing and aim to break ground in the next year. Thank you so much. That's our presentation, but um obviously we have the whole team here for any questions, including the actual owner, Mary Thompson, Stephen, sorry, Mary Stevenson is online, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission for the applicant and the applicant's consultants? No questions? Uh, then I would like to, unless I've missed someone here, there, I've got a... No, I don't think I have. I, I would like to invite any members of the public who would like to comment on the project to comment. And um I'll wait for staff to let me know if there's anyone who wishes to speak.
Um, let's give it just another moment.
Thank you.
It does not appear at this time that we have any public comment.
Very good. Then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Is there anyone uh who would like to begin the discussion? No volunteers? Vice, vice chair Pont, please.
And I can start off by saying, I like the project. Um, and I'd like to start off by thanking Our Town Santa Elena for doing um a good project without pressing the limits uh that they have available to them under the current changes in state law. So, given what they could have requested, uh, this is a, a, a moderate approach to dealing with the site. It looks good. And with the, the alterations that staff has suggested uh in the staff report, I like the project even better. My only remaining difficulty uh is indeed the parking. Um, not just the one space that is handicapped, but the number in its entire. Um, I realize that they, their concession is, is only three spaces, so uh maximum number we could have had on the site anyway was ten under our code. But in just a way of bringing it up for consideration, I think we could have twenty-five people living on the site. Twenty-five people doesn't necessarily mean twenty-five cars, but it could easily mean more than ten. It could easily mean fifteen, sixteen, seventeen even. And I'd hate to think that we would proceed without making everybody aware um that we could be walking into a parking problem um in the area in general. Not that I want to stop this project, uh, but I think it's, it's wise for us to be cognizant of the problems we could be generating in the future.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pont. Uh, any other commissioners would like to comment on the project? Commissioner Anderson, please.
I just want to say that I really like this project. I like it a lot. I don't have any issues with it. Um, I understand the concern about parking. But I, I think that there's a decent amount of parking available. Um, and I think that it's really thoughtfully laid out and I want it done all over town.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Uh, Commissioner Hale.
Um, I'd like to congratulate the Our Town team and the folks who worked on this. Um, I think they've, they've given it a good bit of thought. I, I would agree with John that the amount of parking is the, the, the one area that um that I find a little bit troublesome just because I, I understand that that area of, of town is, is also somewhat impacted, or the street, the street parking is probably, is likely impacted by other units in the area. I'd, I don't, um, it wouldn't hold up my support of this project. I would, I would uh recommend uh perhaps that they, that the team examine ways to get a couple more cars on there. Um, I would suggest maybe, maybe where that one stray visitor, uh, you know, maybe we could stack some tandem uh end-to-end to the right of the driveway uh in lieu of some of that landscaping, but um I, I think it's a, a well sensitively conceived project and I think, I think town, town needs, needs more of this and, and we, we need to support it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. I, I think I agree with everything I've heard, although perhaps um I would express my concern um about the parking in, in more philosophical terms, although uh my concern is also substantive. I, I've learned of um real issues in the neighborhood around the Hunts Grove project arising out of the inadequate parking at that project. And I don't know how many spaces were required in relation to the number of units. So I, I don't know how to compare it to our um required parking for this site or, or any other site. All I know for sure is that the standard that was applied has proved inadequate because it's become an issue in the neighborhood. And, and that, that is being addressed by the city, which will, uh, I, I believe actually, our public works director knows something about this. Uh, so, but before I get it wrong, uh, Ms. Smithies, would you explain what you're looking into in terms of additional parking at Hunts Grove? Or is that on your plate? I can't hear you at all, even though you look unmuted.
Dual muting on my phone and my own Zoom, but we were trying to apply for a um CDVG grant earlier this year. I'm not sure if we were successful or not on that. It was a competitive grant. Um, it was to add, I think and believe, additional twelve spaces uh within the Hunts Grove parking area. So um, but tha- that was the extent of it, that we were trying to get seeking funds to um add additional parking on-site.
Thank you. Um, uh, uh, really just, that was just for, you know, clarification that it's enough of a concern in Hunts Grove. The city has, has pursued opportunities to develop additional parking. And the thing that I learned that really heightens my concern is that the uh inadequacy of the parking on-site at the project didn't only discomfort um the neighbors in the single-family development around Hunts Grove. The conflict over parking also uh had an adverse uh kind of effect on the residents of Hunts Grove. So um, my philosophical concern is that when uh we reduce required parking to uh facilitate the development of the affordable housing we need, uh, we, we, we may be creating conflicts uh that uh, you know, maybe creating the potential for a tension between uh and among all the residents, the project residents and uh, and the surrounding community. So I, I don't know what the answer to that is. It's no obstacle for me in uh approving this project, which is beautifully designed and I think really fits the site very, very well and uh is very sensitive to its surroundings. I, I just, uh, I, I think this, I want to flag this, in other words, as a subject for discussion as we continue the process of reviewing the zoning ordinance and development standards and, and you know, whenever we have an opportunity to get feedback about possible uh solutions, and I think we should seek that. But uh, that's all I have to say about that.
Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Um, I have been informed that a, a member of the public has raised their hand, so I am not sure if you will be opening up public comments one more time.
Uh, I'm willing to do that, but before I do that, um, I would, well, I, I'd like to go back to the projects representatives because I do have um a question for the civil engineer, for Mr. Dickerson. So I'll, I'll reopen the public hearing and ask Mr. Dickerson if he would entertain a question.
He would.
I was at the site, thank you, and it appears to me that at present the uh rear of the property uh drains uh into a concrete wall, in effect, uh since the fence, not only on that rear property line, but both coming back towards the front, at least for some distance on both sides, um, is on a concrete foundation. And um, it's not really important, but I'm curious as to what the solution is.
Well, my sense is that the concrete wall was put there to keep water out of this property um from, from parcels that are closer to the creek. That is, that is my guess.
And that wouldn't surprise me at all, that it serves a kind of flood protection purpose, but um I'm not sure what that means then for uh meeting the required storm drainage planning.
Yes. Well, what, the, the remainder of the answer is that we are bringing, so we are bringing the entire parking area at a very gentle slope back towards the street. So that allows for us to take most of the water that falls on this property and bring it to the gutter um instead of to a neighboring property.
Yeah, so it's, it's a grading solution.
Yeah, that's what we have proposed so far, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, and uh, thank you very much. Uh, so um, I'm ready to hear any comments from members of the public. The public hearing has been reopened.
Ms. Vargas, go ahead.
Ms. Vargas.
Sorry, I, I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm very thankful that um you took um my call. Um, a couple of things. Um, I am a member of the board of Our Town Santa Elena and we're very proud of the project that we are putting in front of you. But also, I happen to be the manager of Hunts Grove Apartments, so twofold. Um, I want to make sure that everybody understands, and it seems that the commissioners do, uh, the great need of affordable housing in this town. We have a waiting list of over four and a half years. After the fires, the amount of calls that we receive for people that have lost their homes, et cetera, et cetera, has increased. But getting back to um the parking issue, um, I think that in, in Hunts Grove, definitely, we, we need more parking. Um, it was created back in nineteen ninety-two, so those um um situations have changed with time. Um, th- the project in, in Pope, uh, I think that the way that it will be um issue with um income guidelines and everything, um, I, I really, by being in this business for so long, we have to be aware of the parking, but I don't feel that it will be uh as big of an issue as Hunts Grove with fifty-six units and families that uh fit in, in a lot of three-bedroom apartments. So um, I, I just want to make sure that somebody can, like, understands the difference between the amount of cars that four more units in a two-bedroom, one bath could bring to the neighborhood um versus what we have here. And I appreciate um the concerns about parking, but um the city has been great working with us. Um, the management of Bridge Housing is also trying to um solve the issue. And meanwhile, you know, the neighbors don't want anybody parked in front of them, but it is public parking. So we try to mediate um how long they can be there. And everybody, for the most part, after we have opened the, the conversation publicly, have come to an understanding and, and everybody is trying to get along. So I really hope that the same thing will happen to the neighbors uh in this great project at nine sixty-three Pope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I, I just want to say, I, again, to be clear, uh, the subject of parking does not dissuade me i- in the smallest bit from approving this, this project. Uh, but um, having become aware that the um well, I'll, I'll put it differently. Because uh, uh, this may explain uh my concern better than anything I've said so far. There is a tendency uh for people in uh single-family residential developments close to um an existing or proposed uh low-income housing project. There's a tendency for people to believe that that is undesirable for the neighbors and that it has adverse impacts on their property values and that it has an adverse impact on their quality of life. So uh, wh- wh- what I've come to appreciate in connection with Hunts Grove and the parking there is that a negative reaction to um the uh parking issue then uh has consequences for the residents of Hunts Grove uh in, in terms of the um aggravation uh of some of the surrounding neighbors when Hunts Grove residents come to park on the street in front of their homes. Uh, so uh, i- i- it, it does seem to me that this is a good thing for us to understand and be mindful of uh when we think about how to do a, a really good job of developing affordable housing in our community. And um that's all I have to say. Are there any more comments or, or, or points of discussion from the commission? And, and if not...
You have some additional public comment.
Oh, very good.
Okay, Michael, you should be able to speak.
Yes, hello. Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, first I'd like to say I think it is a very thoughtfully um designed project and I am all for more of the affordable housing in the area. Um, I am a resident on the Child Signorelli um area there. And I just wanted to comment, and, and I'm glad that it's being discussed because it is a concern about the parking in the area. And there are times currently now when Pope Street becomes filled with parking. Um, and the parking at times even now overflows sometimes onto Child's and Signorelli. Especially sometimes on the Especially sometimes on the weekends, there tend to be more vehicles that are parking on Pope Street because I know there are a number of, you know, apartments and units along the the side of Pope Street where nine sixty three is currently. So I just I just want to hope that we are able to have more conversations about the parking. I was a little concerned to see about the reduction in parking, the allowance from, I guess it's normally ten for a site such as this, to be exempted to seven. So I'm concerned at how many vehicles may be coming along with these five units when they're all available and occupied. That's that's my concern, and I think it should be discussed a little bit further. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak?
It does not look so like at this time.
If there are none, I will close the public hearing. Would you check one more time, please?
We do not have any additional public comment.
Thank you. Then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Is there any further discussion? If not, is there a motion? Please, Vice Chair Pont.
I would like to move that for this thoughtfully well-designed, low-cost housing project, that the Planning Commission determine the project is exempt, seek what they accept the planning director's approval of the lot merger, grant the concessions as described by staff under state law. Accept the required findings and approve the resolution as amended, granting the use permit and the design review approval. And that's the lot.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion before I ask for a roll call? I see none. Ms. Camaro, please.
Vice Chair Pont.
Yes.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
And Chair Hardy.
Yes. Thank you. That completes item five point one on the agenda. Thank you very much, everyone from our town St. Helena, both for the beautifully designed project and also for your presentations this evening. And and especially for the commitment of everyone involved in our town St. Helena to affordable housing in the community. I see we have no matters of new business on the agenda, no scheduled matters, which brings us to department reports. Director DeRosa, do you have a report for us this evening?
Chair Hardy, yes, I do. And I first want to really congratulate our town St. Helena team. This is a real win for the city to get some affordable housing and always be looking to increase our arena allocation.
Mr. DeRosa, your audio is cutting in and out.
Okay, how about now?
I believe that's better.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, in closing that discussion, I just wanted to say I'm thrilled to see some affordable housing coming in at a great location and very much needed. And so we look forward to continuing to partnering with our town on these types of projects. So that's a win-win for tonight. My, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about some upcoming future agendas. I know we are entering the holidays, but we will be having a meeting on December first. There will also be, I believe that agenda has been published, we will also be having a meeting on December fifteenth. And then for the January fifth meeting, we're planning on canceling that, so you can note that in your calendar. So that covers all the upcoming agendas for the next couple of weeks. The only other thing I wanted to bring up to the commission is that you may know that we're had released an RFP for our housing element update. We'll be getting all those proposals on Monday, and we will be selecting a consultant in December. And I believe, Erin, the plan is that we would bring the contract to the council in January. And so I I think we're, Erin and I are both excited to, you know, share with you in early twenty 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 one, what that schedule will look like as we go forward. We'll definitely loop the planning commission in on what you can expect and also have a related to the zoning code update, which is, we're really in the thick of it and in the weeds. And that's why it's been quiet for the planning commission and council, but we will be probably having a public meeting. We're expecting in a joint meeting of the planning commission, the council in February on just one segment of it. Because there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into running a zoning code, and so we're we're doing it one segment at a time. So if you're wondering about that, that's a quick update.
Thank you, Director DeRosa. The agenda forecast, as everyone knows, is online. But this is also an opportunity for the commission as a whole to request items be placed on future agendas for discussion. Is there anyone on the commission who has such a request to propose? I see none, which brings us to adjournment. So sorry, but we have to say good night. Thank you. Thank you all.
Night. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia. Thank you, Marissa.